Welcome to the Citizen Mike Show. Thanks for tuning in, we do appreciate it. My name is Mike Brodinsky. This is the episode for October 12, 2017. On my right, the editor of the Record Journal, Ralph Tomacelli. Ralph, we've got a busy show. We're continuing on with our series chatting with non-incumbent Board of Ed candidates. And we have two candidates in the studio tonight. The first one that we're going to be talking with is Patty Purcell, and the second one is Nick DiAgostino. They are both Democrats. Before we start with Patty, I wanted to sort of review the ground rules for the talk, because even though we've gone over them twice in the past, it pains me to think that maybe some people have missed those earlier shows. You know, it just pains me to think about that. However, we have prepared three standard stock questions that have been emailed to each of the candidates. All seven of the non-incumbents either have been or will be on the show. They have had ample time to review the questions, study them, rehearse in the mirror, research them, you know, test their answers out on a focus group. And I hear maybe that, you know, some are doing that or did it, I don't know. So, you know, the candidates are well-prepared for the answer. We don't know what our follow-ups are going to be very often. We don't know what we're going to say until after we say it, you know, that happens. So, we don't know what the follow-ups are going to be. Also, we are limiting the candidates to about 10 minutes from the time they begin to, you know, receive the first question. Not a lot of time for three topics which can be broad. The idea is, though, that this is somewhat of a test of their ability to get to the point without a lot of irrelevant chatter. Something that we like. Have we covered it? Can you think of any other detail?
They did see the questions ahead of time.
Oh, well, ahead of time. Yeah, they emailed all the questions ahead of time. I think that, I think we've covered that. So, let's get the first candidate, Patty Purcell, on camera. Introduce her, and I'm going to go over her resume a bit and pull some details out. Patty, thanks for coming on the Citizen Mike Show. You're a good sport, brave, brave spirit. This is the second time, actually, I think you've been on the Citizen Mike Show.
It is the second time, and I thank you very much for allowing me to come.
Well, it's our pleasure. You did email to me your resume. I cannot get into all of it, because there's much too much to read on camera, but I did pick some bits and pieces out so our viewers get to know you a little bit. You state that your educational background includes Southern Connecticut State University. You're a graduate, six-year in Educational Foundations in 2001, Masters of Health Education in 1998, and a Bachelor's of Physical Education in 1995. According to your resume, under experience, there's many things there, but the one we're picking out is that you're a physical ed and health teacher, grades K through 5 from 1996 to 2015, and you're part of the 21st Century Innovation Team. That's a Wallingford Board of Education matter, I believe. You list many honors. We're going to just talk about two of them. You were chosen to be one of two teachers for the Wallingford 21st Century Innovation Team, and you were the Wallingford Teacher of the Year 2004 and 2005. You're active in many school district activities. I'm just picking one of them out. The Wallingford Strategic Planning Committee Communications/Partnerships 2013 to the present. You've got and had some writing projects on the go. We don't have time to list them, but it's enough to mention that they are out there. So, let's get to the first question. The first question is a little different than other questions you might find at a forum. In researching the, or in preparation for the Board of Ed chats, I came across this Atlantic Monthly article. It goes back to April 2014. It's a little bit different, but I wanted to pass, I wanted to pass it by all the, all the candidates are going to be talking with. The title of the article is "Don't Help Your Kids With Their Homework: Don't Help Your Kids With Their Homework and Other Insights From A Groundbreaking Study Of How Parents Impact Children's Academic Achievement." I'm going to read a couple paragraphs, and I want to add that Nick DiAgostino, our second guest, is in the audience. He's behind the cameras. He's hearing the same sentences, and we're not going to repeat the same question with Nick, and we're not going to penalize Patty for the time spent going over it. So, going over some of what's in this article, it says, "One of the central tenets of raising kids in America is that parents should be actively involved in their children's education: meeting with teachers, volunteering at school, helping with homework, and doing 100 other things that few working parents have time for. These obligations are so baked into American values that few parents stop to ask whether they're worth the effort. The largest ever study of how parental involvement affects academic achievement," and the article lists a couple of guys that did this, and the universities, "they found that," they're sociology professors, "they found that it mostly doesn't affect academic achievement." The researchers combed through nearly three decades' worth of longitudinal surveys of American parents and tracked 63 different measures of parental participation in kids' academic lives. What they found surprised them: most measurable forms of parental involvement seem to yield few academic dividends." Let me just stop there. I think I've covered all that I want to, ah, "One of the reasons parental involvement in schools has become dogma is that the government actively incentivizes it. Since the late 1960s, the federal government has spent hundreds of millions of dollars on programs that seek to engage parents." Patty, your thoughts on what I read or any other part of this article?
Okay. Well, before I take any research at face value, I kind of look at the research. I like to see how they came to their conclusions, what were the variables, how experts in the field looked at that same research. And what I found was Robinson and Harris, they had, didn't collect new data. They took survey data from lots of different studies. And one of the things that, issues that bothered me is that some of the things were, they didn't define parental involvement equally across it, and there was no, like, control group. And so then I looked at other researchers to see what they thought, and I saw that Harvard and John Hopkins and the National Partnership for Schools, Parents, and Community, they didn't agree with a lot of the findings here. The one thing they did agree on was homework, that homework was an issue, and I want to talk to that in a second. But the other thing that was hard was the scope was kind of narrow. They only used test scores, and I think students can succeed lots of different ways other than just test scores. But when you talk about homework, as a teacher, I've definitely seen homework and projects that come into the schools that the parents have done. And obviously, that's too much involvement. As a parent, I, or the other thing I want to say, though, is that students need to do homework, and they need to be able to try to do as much as they can on their own. And it's okay if they struggle a little bit, because that's part of the learning. But as a parent of three children, all three of them needed different, different types of intervention. My oldest one needed a little help with concepts. My youngest one needed help with organization. My middle one didn't need help at all. But I think as a parent, what you can do that's positive is kind of set the stage for them to succeed. So, for instance, my youngest daughter is a morning person. She gets up at 5:00 in the morning. When I tried to make her do homework after school, she spent a lot of time wasted focusing. When I started to let her do her homework before school at 5:00 o'clock, all of a sudden she was successful. She was focused. My son, he had to come home from school. He had to burn off energy, he had to run around before he could sit down, and because organization was an issue for him, he needed to have a checklist to sit and check off and make sure he got all the pieces done. I think it's important for parents to be involved in school. It's just how you're involved with your students' education. If you're there helping them become independent learners, then that's a good thing. If you're doing the work for them, then that's being over-involved.
You know, I think one other thing that the study points out is the money that has been spent over the years on trying to encourage parental involvement. So now, imagining that you're a Board of Education member, and you have to prioritize spending, so we have some of the things that you'd be thinking about: staff, technology, building, and then we'll add in parental involvement program. So, where would that rank in those four items?
Well, I think I'd have to see what, where the holes were, I would suppose, you know, and look at, you know, how much, I kind of have to see how much things would cost, what kind of, like, for instance, technology, is it a lot of money? Is it going to benefit a lot of people? So, I really would have to compare the benefit, you know, the pros and the cons, I think, to answer that question precisely.
So, Patty, good answer. The title, "Don't Help Your Kids With Their Homework." I think what you're saying is, do help with their homework.
I was saying, don't sit there and do the homework for them, but help them be successful in whatever it needs to help them get there. But students need to be able to feel successful and build their own confidence that they can do this.
Okay.
Move on?
Yeah. Let's do that, because we've got two big, two big questions remaining. So, here's the next one. "Thirteen people are running for the Board of Education. Nine will be elected. Why should voters make you one of," and "you" is italicized, okay? "Why should voters make you one of their choices for the Board of Education? What distinguishes you from the rest of the pack? What will your presence add to the group formed by the other eight Board members that will be elected?"
Okay. I've been a teacher in Wallingford most of my career. I've taught everything from pre-K through college. I've led curriculum writing projects. I've led teacher workshops. I've done grants. I've developed policies. I've organized community and school events and programs, and I've done all that at the national, at the state, and the local level. Now, specifically to Wallingford, one of the things that will really make me stand out is that I was part of the 21st Century Innovation Team, and that was, I was selected in a competitive process. Only two teachers were selected. We spent an entire year researching ways to improve the Wallingford school systems. We went to schools in and out of the state. We went to nearly every school, every classroom in Wallingford, looking for innovative practices and successful practices. We read books. We led community events, like we did a town-wide read of mindset, and Mike, you were part of that.
Yep.
Where we brought the community into the schools. We did a town-wide event on core values, trying to find out what the town is, is involved. And then what we did is we took all that information and we put it, we brought it to the district, and some of those ideas have kind of been adopted. Some are just taking shape, and I can bring all this expertise right to the board. And the, Wallingford's already invested in me. They've already spent the time and the money in me, and I'd like to be able to give that back. When I was Teacher of the Year in Wallingford, I got a chance to work at the State Department of Education. And there, I was a teacher resident, and I was helping new teacher-mentor programs across the state. They wanted someone who'd been in the trenches, and in that position, I got to work with legislators and policymakers and college prep programs and districts around the, around the state. And I got to get them, let them know what it's like to be a teacher in the field. I also wrote grants, learned how to write grants there, and I wrote a grant for $315,000 for the Wallingford schools that year. Since then, I have been heading up the district's new teacher-mentor program. I've helped people do grants, and I think it's really important to have somebody on the, on the board that's been in the district. I think if you asked me three things that I think I bring, I think the first one is my extensive educational experience. The second one is that I've already brought innovative things to Wallingford. I know how to roll it out. I know how to get it going. And the third thing is, I'm known across the district as somebody who can get people to work together, who can come to consensus, and I think we're going to have some tough decisions coming up, and so I think that would be something I can bring to the board.
Now, one thing you would have to kind of address, if you're elected, is you would be going from working with and for the superintendent of schools
Yep.
...to being one of nine bosses of the superintendent of schools.
Yes, yes.
So, I think it's a fair question to ask.
Sure.
I mean, how do you, how do you adjust, and how, more importantly, do you avoid, you know, the appearance that you and Dr. Menzo may have too close of a relationship?
I think that's a great question, and actually, I've been asked that question a lot, because a couple of questions people ask, they go, "One, are you a type of person who'll speak up?" And I said, "Well, obviously, you don't know me, because anyone who's worked with me would say that." The second one is, "Would you be willing to speak up against something if you didn't agree with Dr. Menzo?" And I say, "Ask Dr. Menzo. He'll tell you for sure." I come with data. I come with a lot of backup, and I think I will do, you know, whatever's right is what I'm going to speak up for.
Let's get to the last question. We don't have a lot of time on this one, Patty, but here it goes. "The typical talking point is that public schools always need to improve and be more this, that, and the other. These boring general platitudes aside, are you reasonably satisfied with the school district's track record and the general trajectory of the board's past policies and approaches? Or do you believe that a specific adjustment in policy or tone is needed? If so, please be specific." The follow-up question, I'll get it in there now, but it's in the, in the email that I sent you. "So, if you're elected, are things pretty much the same, or are there going to be a change?"
Okay. I mean, generally, I'm happy with the district. I mean, I worked there for most of my career. My three students went to school here. They got into excellent colleges. They have great jobs. They're independent, you know, productive citizens, so overall, it's great. But you can always improve, and like, just when I say with Innovation Team, we brought lots of ideas. Specifically, some of the things I could bring to the board are things that maybe no one else is thinking about, because I was in the district. For instance, professional development. I have a no-cost way that we could kind of make that better. We have a lot of expertise in Wallingford. I saw that when I went to the different classrooms. And the way professional development's done right now is mostly the administrators and the resource teachers are doing it. And they're very knowledgeable in what they're doing, but you can't be an expert in everything. And I think we need to build a really strong database of all the expertise we have in the district, and we need to tap into it. I mean, there are teachers that do come forward, but we have a lot more. And the other problem with that is the administrators and the resource teachers aren't getting professional development. The other thing I'd really like to work on is a social, a social-emotional curriculum. When I was, I know as a teacher, if a student is socially and emotionally ready, teaching's easy, students learn fast. When I was on the Innovation Team, we asked companies, we asked colleges, parents, educators, town leaders, what's the one thing our students are lacking when they leave our schools? And 100% of the time, it was those soft skills. It was like they need to know how to cooperate, how to communicate, how to persevere, how to problem-solve. They basically need to know how to work together and not give up. And I agree with that. And I know, I know that we've started to do that in Wallingford, a couple of different ways, and I just want to continue the, the plan.
Let's make that
Yeah.
...the last word. Thanks for coming on the show. Good luck on the campaign. We appreciate talking with you.
Thank you very much.
And, all right. Don't go away. Be right back with Nick DiAgostino. Our next guest in the studio is Democratic candidate for the Board of Education, Nick DiAgostino. Nick, thanks for coming in. Welcome to the Citizen Mike Show.
Thanks for having me.
Okay, well, we appreciate it. We got your resume that you kindly emailed to me. I'm going to pick some stuff out of there.
Okay.
Again, as with all, all the candidates, we can't read the whole thing
No.
...in the interest of time.
No.
But let's introduce our viewers to Nick. He is a lifelong resident of Wallingford, a few years out of town for college, as a product of the public school system in Wallingford. Nick is an associate in diversity and equity at Central Connecticut State University. He serves as the Chair of the LGBT Advisory Committee. Prior to his employment with CCSU, he worked at the State Department of Children and Families and served as DCF's Central Office Liaison to True Colors. As an associate in university, Nick has brought key speakers to campus and has trained hundreds of staff and faculty. He received his Bachelor's Degree in Sociology in 2004 from Quinnipiac University, and his Master's Degree in Counselor Education with a specialization in student development in higher education from CCSU. That was 2017 degree. Nick, we've got a lot of business to take care of. Let's get to that first question. You heard it, because you were sitting in the audience when we interviewed or chatted with Patty Purcell. It has to do with that Atlantic Monthly piece entitled "Don't Help Kids With Their Homework and Other Insights From A Groundbreaking Study Of How Parents Impact Children's Academic Achievement." What were your thoughts after reading the article?
You know, it was, it was a really interesting article. You know, research can support lots of things. It can support both sides of political debates, and so, you know, you know, just come out of a master's program where a lot of it is research-based, a lot of it's writing-based. You know, they teach us to look at the research. They teach us to question, you know, the research, the validity, what, where could there be gaps? And so, I think there's things that were, that were in there that were interesting, but they didn't factor in, or didn't appear that they factored in, other dynamics that impact learning, issues around poverty, family violence, and other issues in the home life that can be a distraction for young people in, in schools. You know, that can certainly hinder, you know, students' performance and, and success. You know, you know, shifting focus to two points that they, that they found I agreed with, were reading to kids early. You know, I think that that's essential. I think teaching kids to have excitement around reading from birth, I think, is really important. Reading to our kids is, is an essential tool to promote learning. And then encourage the positive benefits of, of, of school, and, and that can be either through K-12, but also beyond, to, to the higher-end environment. So, I think it just gets added to the plethora of research as it relates to student performance, you know, and it's certainly, you know, a perspective to, to consider. Any thoughts, Ralph?
Well, so, your advice in the end, if the question is, "Should I help children with their, my child with the homework?", is?
Absolutely. And we should, we should support kids in doing their homework. We should challenge them if they're, if they're struggling in, in doing their homework, to get them to do it on their own, to empower them, to be excited about getting answers right where they were struggling. You know, I mean, parents who, you know, and I guess it happens, parents who do the work for them is probably going to hurt the, the child academically. You know, I had, you know, guidance when I was, you know, in school, but, you know, I did most of it on my own, and because of that self-taught and, and strength there, I was able to be very successful beyond the K-12 system here. And so, yeah, no, help them. Parents are great advocates. They, they change the way we operate our schools, often for the good. And so, I think without parents, you know, our, our schools will just be, I would say mediocre. Parents add value. They're advocates. They create change, and they create a better school system.
Question two?
Yes, absolutely.
Nick, you ready to go?
I'm ready.
So, we emailed you this question. "Thirteen people are running for the Board of Education. Nine will be elected. Why should the voters make you one of their choices for the Board of Education? What distinguishes you from the rest of the pack? What will your presence add to the group formed, formed by the other eight members that will be elected? What say you?"
All right, so I'll take this from a couple approaches. I'm probably the only candidate, that candidate that can say that three generations on my dad's side attended Wallingford Public Schools, and two from my, my mother's side. We are a Wallingford family, and we continue to be Wallingford families. And so, and I'm also a product of the school system. So, going with K-12, the foundation that this school system gave me launched me to be successful for my Bachelor's Degree, and successful in my career, and successful in ultimately obtaining my Master's. I gained a voice in high school through the support of the countless folks there, not just the teachers, but they were great. The office staff, the administrators, the, the guidance counselors, the food service staff, the custodians, you know, we had relationships with all those folks. And so, I know the power of every individual that is in a school that impacts us as individual students. So, I recognize that. I value that, and I certainly support every person who's within our school system. What I bring to the table, I'm, I'm an equity person. I engage in social justice regularly, both professionally in diversity and equity, but also socially. And so, I look at things from an equitable standpoint. Are these, are changes or our policies or, or reforms that are happening in our school necessary, and who's being impacted? And if we're not looking at every stakeholder, when we have a conversation, that we address a topic, then we're missing a huge piece of that conversation. And I certainly would, I'd be very restrained to support something that doesn't have stakeholder input. And I don't, that's technically operate from a consensus model. I don't think we all have to be on board with every topic. I think when we disagree, the conversation's real. It brings in the perspectives that are essential. And if we all come to a vote that, that's, that is consensus, fantastic. But I think we have to challenge each other to think outside the box, to think differently. And that's something I do currently in my role. It's something I do on another board that I'm involved with. It can be controversial at times, but in the end, it's all about the organization that you're, you're operating. Any thoughts?
Well, you bring up the, the notion of equity and your experience and expertise in it. So, you know, you follow, I'm sure you know some of the things that the school, school board is dealing with, the policies, the issues that it's dealing with. So, is there something that's been in the news or been on your radar that deserves more consideration in terms of inclusiveness and equity?
Right. You know, being an anti-bullying educator and activist, you know, it can be a very daunting task for schools to tackle what is bullying, what is not bullying, what's harassment, and the legal definition. And so, I operate from the premise, if it's mean interviewing. We have to teach young people to care about each other. You know, I saw a presentation that, you know, one of the biggest reasons people lose their jobs is an inability to get along with others. That's not taught in college. That starts in kindergarten, and then obviously all the way through the school system. So, you know, we have to teach young people to care about each other. And I'm not sure how much technology is hindering that. You know, we're constantly on our phones. We're constantly texting. We're not having conversations. You know, and young kids are obviously doing that far more than I am, and far more than, than most adults are doing. And so, you know, that is something that we have to teach them how to care, care about each other. So, that's something that I obviously would stand for.
Let's get the last one, too.
Yeah.
"The typical talking point is that public schools always need to improve and be more this, that, and the other. Those boring platitudes aside, are you reasonably satisfied with the school district's track record and the general trajectory of the board's past policies and approaches? Or do you believe that a specific adjustment in policy or tone is needed? If so, please be specific. The built-in follow-up they emailed to you, so if you're elected, everything is pretty much the same, or not? Your thoughts?"
All right. Well, I think, give it my last answer. You know, I don't necessarily operate from consensus. I'm going to challenge, I'm going to question everything. Maybe that's because I'm in the beginning years of the millennial generation, which is the Y generation. We ask Y for everything. You know, I question everything. You know, why are we doing this? What's the point? How do we enforce it? And then ultimately go on from there. When I look at what's, what's happening, I'm a product of the school system, so I'm, you know, very proud of, of a lot of what they've done. And so, I certainly, you know, give credit where it's due, you know, and I think we have a quality school system here. I think the administrators and the, and the teachers and the staff do a phenomenal job. I question some of the physical plans and why we haven't improved them. I think we're kicking the can down the streets. If you look at the high schools
You mean the buildings?
The buildings themselves, yeah. Yeah, the physical structures. You know, we're not able to compete with schools, districts that have brand-new schools and brand-new technology in the classroom. So, you know, at some point, we're going to have to do it. It'll be more expensive down the road, so why don't we figure out the plan now? And they, I guess they've talked about it, and it's in some strategic plan, but we need to catch up with the business around us. The one thing that, that I want to hone in here, and I'm new to sort of engaging with the Board of Ed, having attended, starting, starting last fall, I noticed that they're making cuts, you know, because of budget reasons. But I've noticed a lot of those cuts are affecting the lowest earners. You know, they've made clerical workers 10 months. They've gone after parit professionals before that. They've gone after custodial workers. They've gone after all the contracts in terms of givebacks and the health insurance. And then, more recently, they wanted to get rid of the food service workers and outsource that. So, here they are making all these cuts at the bottom. I can understand if, if it was equitable, but I also recently saw that the superintendent got a raise. So, how can we in good faith give raises at the top, grow middle management? We have lots of coordinator positions that are now in place, and yet we're cutting those who have direct contact with kids on a daily basis. I don't understand how that's equitable. I don't understand how we can look our, our staff in the face and say, "We're doing what's in the best interest here," and then give myself a raise, or give someone around me a raise. That type of stuff is something I just won't stand for, and certainly won't approve a budget that cuts at the lowest end, but not at the highest. making cuts, you know, because of budget reasons. But I've noticed a lot of those cuts are affecting the lowest earners. You know, they've made clerical workers 10 months. They've gone after parrot professionals before that. They've gone after custodial workers, they've gone after all the contracts in terms of givebacks and the health insurance. And then, more recently, they wanted to get rid of the food service workers and outsource that. So, here they are making all these cuts at the bottom. I can understand if, if it was equitable. But I also recently saw that the superintendent got a raise. So, how can we in good faith give raises at the top, grow middle management? We have lots of coordinator positions that are now in place, and yet we're cutting those who have direct contact with kids on a daily basis. I don't understand how that's equitable. I don't understand how we can look our, our staff in the face and say, we're doing what's in the best interest here, and then give myself a raise, or give someone around me a raise. That type of stuff is something I just won't stand for, and certainly won't approve a budget that cuts at the lowest end, but not at the highest.
I've got a quick follow-up.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I could step on your toes.
No.
Nick, you gave an answer, or part of your answer, a little while back, and I don't know if I read too much into it, but you, you mentioned the word consensus, and you weren't necessarily a consensus guy. I think you said consensus is good, but it's not, you know, absolutely necessary. Was that a observation or a comment on how the current board operates?
You know, I'm very new, so I've only observed a few. It does seem to operate where we kind of all get on board with a topic and sort of go in that direction. There might be some dissension here and there, but even in talking to folks who are currently on the board, you know, they, you know, they say it's really non-partisan, it's really, we work together, we're a team, and that's wonderful. I think team efforts can really bring forward great ideas and great change. But I will, I will have no problem rocking the boat if that's what's needed on a particular topic, and I'll certainly listen to those who it impacts, the teachers, the families, and the kids.
Let's make that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Nick, thanks for coming on the Citizen Mike Show. We appreciate it. Good luck on the campaign trail. A great job, and we'll see you around town.
You got it, absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be right back. Don't go away. So, Ralph, we're producing this show, of course, on Wednesday, October 11. Last weekend was Celebrate Wallingford.
Okay.
By published reports, it was a great, you know, it was a great, successful Celebrate Wallingford.
Absolutely.
We have a surprise for our viewers. And let me just introduce it this way. Last spring, I met for the first time a young aspiring journalist graduate. She graduated from the University of Connecticut and was interested in, in particular photojournalism, but, you know, has broad, has broad skills. We got to talking as to whether or not she might want to contribute and help the Citizen Mike Show with some, with some videos. Her name is Bailey Wright, and she was very, she very graciously agreed to try to help us out with, you know, some stuff that we, we don't do, you know, I really can't do. And so, we got a little video of Celebrate Wallingford. That's the nexus. I started with Celebrate Wallingford, introduced Bailey Wright. This is a video by her. Let's see what she put together.
Good.
Here we go. Three, two, one. Bruce, hit it.
Record crowds came out for Celebrate Wallingford, the town's 31st annual community gathering on October 7th and 8th. An estimated 15,000 people enjoyed the celebration on Saturday alone, taking in the live entertainment, crafters, and food. Event coordinator and executive director of Wallingford Center, Inc., Liz Lando, said this year was the busiest she'd ever seen in her 20-plus years working the event. At times, you couldn't even see the street, there were so many people, she said. A record 48 civic groups, 40 businesses, 20 crafters, and 16 restaurants participated in the weekend-long festival this year. Crafters spanned from wood signs, yarn creations, and homemade sauces. Well-known downtown restaurants such as The Eatery, Mr. D's, and Amor Pizza contributed to the taste of Wallingford available. Celebrate Wallingford is bigger than ever now. We asked Liz Lando to explain how the event first started in 1986 and how it has evolved over three decades.
It started 31 years ago as a vehicle to celebrate. The town had gotten an all-new streetscape and benches and period lighting, and the town looked beautiful, and they decided to throw a party in honor of how gorgeous the town looked. Over the last 31 years, it's just evolved into a huge party. It's not a money-making thing, it's not a fundraiser, it is just something that all the townspeople can come and enjoy and celebrate. Wallingford, the wonderful town we live in.
This year, the annual YMCA Fishbone Road Race collaborated with Celebrate Wallingford, so runners finished at the celebration Sunday morning. More than 200 runners plowed through an early morning rain to finish either a 5K or 10K to support Live Strong at the Wallingford YMCA. Students from local art studios Splat and Catalyst decorated downtown storefronts and fire hydrants for the festival. Splat painted 17 storefronts over four days leading up to the event. The paintings ranged from cute monsters with cupcakes to dancing eggs and bacon. The Wallingford Yard Bombers also decorated all along Center Street with matted creations. Other fun features of this year's celebration were a model train show presented by the New Haven Society of Model Engineers and a classic car show hosted by the Dewop Cruisers on Sunbed. The Wallingford Community Women hosted a kids' area throughout the weekend, featuring visits from reptiles and snakes, various superheroes like Batman and Wonder Woman, Polynesian dancers, and balloon artists. Overall, Celebrate Wallingford helps to strengthen the Wallingford community every year.
We're very fortunate that we have a vehicle like this that we can showcase and let people know about all those opportunities that are out there and all those groups that exist that make Wallingford the wonderful community it is.
Can't beat that.
No.
Just can't beat that.
What a great job.
Yeah.
And Wallingford Center, Inc. should somehow try to link to that video, or, you know...
We'll let them know.
Yeah, that's a great promotional piece for Celebrate Wallingford.
Well, thanks to Bailey Wright.
Yeah, Bailey Wright, that's what I mean. She did a great job.
Yeah, and so, here's a little, a little tip. I think next week, it might be the week after, we're going to have another video by Bailey Wright, which is going to be, by my standards, a true bombshell. This was a bombshell.
Okay.
The next one is going to be even, well, as much of a bombshell, maybe even more.
Okay.
Another video by Bailey Wright. I'm not telling you what it is, I'm just saying you better show up, be in the seat, and watch.
Oh, yeah, I know. Now, I have to be.
So, we're not done with Bailey Wright and the, and the videos. All set?
All set.
All right. So, let's, let's get to a topic that's very tough to talk about because it inflames such passions one way or another. People are absolutely unpersuadable once they've taken a position on this. They've dug in their heels on, you know, one set of facts or one scenario, they don't want to listen to the other side of this issue, and it's very divisive for the country. Of course, I am talking about a controversy, I don't want to say started by Colin Kaepernick, the former quarterback, professional quarterback for the San Francisco 49ers, but he highlighted it last year when, when the National Anthem was playing, he stayed on the bench. I think he was on injured reserve or something, and actually wasn't in uniform at the time. But that controversy carried over to this year, and of course, you have to be on Mars not to know what I'm talking about.
Right.
Okay? So, I don't want to spend too much time recreating the wheel on, on the issue, but I wanted to talk to you about it.
Sure.
The way I want to approach it is to dissect it into various topics, but in the beginning, read some stuff that I found. It's, it's not going to be too long, there's several short pieces, because sometimes folks can be more articulate than we are.
Absolutely.
Right? I mean, you know, just saying. So, I want to get some basic stuff out, and then inform the basis, and I'm going to get your opinion on some stuff.
Sure.
So, I want to start, and this was an article, from an article in the New York Times Sunday edition, September 10, before a lot of this, before a lot of this broke. It was a major, a major piece in the sports section, actually. Yeah, Sports Sunday. It starts, didn't start this way, but like two or three paragraphs down, it says, Kaepernick is now and may forever be known for a simple silent gesture. He is the quarterback who knelt for the National Anthem before National Football League games last year as a protest against social injustice, especially the deaths of African-Americans, African-American Americans in the hands of police. Almost immediately, many of the complex, real-world issues of the times, police violence, presidential politics, and the foment of racial clashes that continued to boil over in places like Charlottesville, Virginia, all flushed through the filter of Kaepernick's gesture. Time Magazine put him on the cover, kneeling next to the words, "The Perilous Fight." With the NFL season beginning in earnest, now remember, this was, you know, September 10 of this year. With the NFL season beginning in earnest this weekend, Kaepernick finds himself out of the league, either exiled or washed up, depending upon the perspective. The article, the article, you know, goes on in detail more about Colin Kaepernick. So, I want to skip articles now before you and I start chatting about it. And this comes from an op-ed in the Hartford Current, it goes back to October 1. In it, about two-thirds of the way down, it reads this way. Instead, like every racist before him and every former slave owner, Trump tries to swap his racism in the flag, tries to rap, sorry, rap his racism in the flag, insisting that kneeling, sitting, or doing anything other than standing at attention during the singing of the Star Spangled Banner shows disrespect for the military and the flag. On which point, he's wrong, this says, if the flag stands for anything, if our men and women in uniform are fighting for anything, it's the right to protest, including not standing for the anthem. Let me just skip ahead and we're going to...
Great, good. No, we're doing good.
The Hartford Current, also in that October 1, I think is the, might be the editorial page, collected various comments from figures around the state on the issue and put them in like a collage. And I want to read, you know, bits and pieces of some of them that I thought illustrate points being made. Bear with me on this. This is from a high school athletic director. A group of, it's in Buckley, Buckley High, a group of Buckley football players wanted to take a knee during the National Anthem before a game last year, similar to Kaepernick, to protest police brutality and racial injustice. "We called the boys in and asked them what was their reasoning," Buckley Athletic Director Diane Callis said. "They do have a right to freedom of speech, and we can't deny that, but we were concerned about their reasoning. All of them spoke eloquently about their beliefs. My principal said then, you have to walk the walk, you're not just talking, taking the knee because you want to be in the newspaper or on TV. You're doing your homework, you're in class on a team, you lead by example, you show people I'm against what's going on, but I'm responsible and a respectable young person who wants to do something with their life. At the football game, the players faced the flag and knelt. The very next game, every single kid was back upstanding," Callis said. "We gave them a chance to have a way to peacefully protest." I got a couple more. Bear with me. Ray, Ray Allen, know Ray Allen?
Absolutely.
UConn grad. He, he says this, "As an American citizen through and through, born and raised by a military man, Dad served 20 years plus in the armed forces. I love this country. There are some truths to what it means to be black in the United States. I wish people would understand. I support the NFL players kneeling. We've seen countless young black men get shot throughout America. We now have to tell our young black men, our children, do not resist, put your hands in the air. All these things, white men don't have to tell their white sons." Another thing, as an athlete, anytime I say anything on social media, people come on my wall and say, stick to basketball, stay out of politics, you're just an athlete. What do you, what do you know about politics? That is such a huge slap in the face. Jim Calhoun, UConn coach, said in part, "It's such a difficult time," he said, "and nothing happens in a vacuum. It used to be we could compete in a bubble and someone makes a statement, no one notices. Now, everybody notices. If a player wanted to protest, they have to know the reasons. If he could give me logical reasons, I think you have to let the players express themselves." That's who we are as a country right now, and at these times, you make those kinds of expressions. This is, there is something amiss right now, something dividing our country, and I can see it everywhere." Finally, from a fellow who owns a business in Norwich. The owner of Harp and Dragon in Norwich, Scott Capano, says his pub will no longer air NFL games, and he plans to end all football-themed specials. "I couldn't be more against police brutality. It's disgusting," Capano said. However, I also think being disrespectful to our flag and our National Anthem is disgusting. If they had another form of protest, I would absolutely support it." He called his broadcast blackout strictly a business decision, and so far, it hasn't affected his revenue in the slightest, garnering more positive than negative reactions from longtime customers. "This is strictly a personal belief that our flag shouldn't be used in a protest," Capano says. "They have a right to protest as we do." I'm done with reading, Ralph. I do have some, I will confess, a checklist of topics that I want to raise with you, because if I didn't put them in a checklist, I might skip over them. Some of them may overlap, but I wanted to get your reaction first to the whole scene or anything that I, that I read.
Okay, and that was a lot.
Yeah.
So, let me just pick out some highlights.
Yeah.
I really liked that principal that went to the players and said, you know, what are you protesting? And I think that if, if President Trump had taken that approach, rather than calling them sons of a bitches, sons of bitches, not a word I like to use or even like to use on WPAA, but...
That's what he said.
That's what he said. And so, think of the difference here, a high school principal who's saying, why are you protesting? And a president that says, wouldn't you like to see them fire those SOBs? So, I'm very impressed with that.
Jim Calhoun had a similar thought.
Yes, I'm glad you brought up Jim Calhoun, because Jim Calhoun says there's something dividing our country. And, you know, I think before President Trump called the NFL players SOBs, I think approximately five players kneeled during the, or took some form of protest during the National Anthem. And then, after his SOB comment, virtually the whole league protested. So, listen, I don't want to suggest, there were divisions in this country long before Donald Trump started running for president. He did not create the divisions, but he is truly a master at, at capitalizing or, or inflaming those divisions. So, I'll make those two points.
Yeah. The president has been trading on, on racial division and race resentment since the primary days.
Well, yes, right.
He's been, he's been trading on that. While we're, while we're, well, one issue on my checklist is how the First Amendment interplays in this. And I did not want this to be a primer on the First Amendment, et cetera, and the legalities of the league, of the contracts, you know, what's in the players' contracts, what's in the league rules is well beyond the scope of this segment of, of the show. I think that aside, that the broad concept that people are talking about is, should famous men, famous black men who work for NFL teams, while in public but on private property, except for the Green Bay Packers, I think, while on private property, working for a private business, should they able, should they be able to express their feelings to get publicity for their position, for their protest? What, how does the First Amendment play in? And this debate goes back and forth. Some people say, no, they shouldn't do it there, pick another place. Other people say, you know, we, we support them. We saw the, two, two coaches, one a high school football coach and one Jim Calhoun, saying, you know, I want to hear their reasons. If it passes muster, we're going to, we're going to go with it. Your thoughts, and I'll move on down the, down the list. Or have we covered that?
I think you've covered it.
There was a comment in the national news that, I think it was Trump and Pence and some of the other national leaders were saying their objection, their objection to National Football League players protesting by taking a knee, they derisively call them the kneelers, their objection has nothing to do about race, which misses the point. It's all about race. The people that are protesting, the black men that are protesting, and some of the white players are in arms with that, you know, are comrades in arms, is the word I was looking for. This is about their perception as to how white America treats black America, a problem that's been going on for hundreds of years in the United States. It's all about race. And to brush it aside, it's about the flag, it's about veterans, it's about something else, it's all about race. It's part of the troubled history that the United States has. So, let's not sweep it under the rug and call it something else. Your thoughts, or should I?
Well, no, I think that's, the thing I want to point out is, I thought, one of the, one of the things that, as a sports fan, I liked about the NFL's response was that you had some of the most prominent white players in the league, I think Tom Brady and the quarterback for Green Bay, Aaron Rodgers, jump out immediately, who immediately lent their support to this, who in, in the face of the power of the president, immediately joined with black players. And imagine if they hadn't, because you know, a lot of America was looking to see, you know, what are the other players going to do? So, I thought that was just, you know, we hear a lot about brotherhood in sports, and I thought that was, was wonderful.
Some of the comments we hear, letters to the editor and, and by leaders, is that kneeling during the National Anthem shows disrespect for the flag and, and for, for veterans. Veterans can speak for themselves. I'm a veteran, I don't take it as disrespect. Other veterans may take it another way. Painting with a broad brush and a generalization, I think misses the mark. think misses the mark. Different veterans feel differently about this. But the word, the word disrespect has some meaning that we should go into. Disrespect, whether you respect or disrespect, is a frame of mind. It's a state of mind. So if, if, let's say on this show, we joke or have a, you know, a, a light sarcastic or snarky comment, it may be actual disrespect. It may be for humor. It may be to draw attention to an issue and to evoke a response. You cannot impute disrespect to someone unless you can crawl into their mind and, and know what they're thinking or why they're doing it. And certainly, if someone has a protest going on during, during the National Anthem or some other ceremony, especially in this case, where it's not a disruptive protest. It's not like heckling or shouting down the American Anthem or pulling the plug on the, on the PA system. It's a, it's a quiet protest. The intent of the black players who are kneeling or the players that are kneeling, go ask them what their intent is, but don't force down their throats a, a state of mind they may not have. So those that say it's a sign of disrespect or engaging in some sort of a factual fiction, don't impute or deem it to be disrespect when it may not be that at all. It may be their only way or their, their most effective way of drawing attention to an issue, which is not the same as disrespecting the flag and veterans. Your thoughts? I got to take a breath.
Right. I think history really emphasizes your point, because like a lot of people, I'm watching Ken Burns series on Vietnam.
Yeah.
And there was a case where people clearly were protesting the flag, the military, not just the presidents that were sending the soldiers there, but they were critical of the generals, the soldiers that went to Vietnam. So none of that, and I might point out, those protesters were of all backgrounds. And as I watched Ken Burns series, most of those protesters seemed to be white. I didn't do a, but, but we know what it looks like historically when people are protesting, the military and the men are serving. None of that has come through in this NFL protest.
Yeah. But the same old love it or leave it slogan has popped up again in some of the letters to the editor or in angry opinions. And that, of course, is a false choice. You know, you can love your country, but see problems that need to be solved. And so that choice, you either accept everything wholesale without criticism, or you, or you leave it or something, it's sort of empty bumper sticker talk. So if the love it or leave it crowd, fine, but you're not persuading, I don't think, many people. My, I think probably bottom line thought, but I got, I got some more on, on the checklist, is that what is not helpful during this is to get angry and engage in some sort of political road rage and exaggerate perceived slights into language that you call traitorous or disrespecting the flag or veterans. We don't need the road rage. It's not helpful. It drives people into other corners of the, of the ring, so to speak. There's no, no good to come out of that. There's no benefit to that sort of attitude. It's not helping solve anything if you use this anger and you start this name-calling. That's where Trump and Pence did a huge disservice to this country, in my view. By, rather than allowing Colin Kaepernick or others who wanted to, to kneel, let it go and open another, you know, respectful, respectful conversation. That's the way to bring this country forward, not capitalizing on racial tensions and racial divide like Trump and Pence did. When I'm referring to Pence, I'm talking about what I believe was his, his grandstanding, his staging of walking out of a 49ers game if they protested. And of course, many of the players were going to, he knew that, but he did it just so he could walk out and pour more gasoline on the fire. He's, he is a follower in that regard and not a leader. He's following his base and not leading the country to a better place. He's leading it to a worse place on, on this issue. Your thoughts?
Well, I agree with you totally. Nor is it helpful. You said, for example, that you're a veteran.
Yeah.
And you didn't take it as disrespect to the flag or the military.
Not at all.
But some veterans, some family members of veterans, and some people who have no connection to the military do take it that way. And I think we have to grant them that that's a legitimate feeling and opinion, as long as it's not doing what you're saying, which is attaching all kinds of falsehoods to the protest. It's okay. I've heard people of all ages, political persuasions, race, say that they find kneeling for the, for the National Anthem disrespectful to the flag and the military. I've heard it from enough people that I have to say that's a legitimate feeling, that should not be in any way belittled.
Which is a legitimate feeling.
That you can feel that it's disrespectful, honestly, and not, and feel it without hating the players or hating what they're doing. You just don't like anybody doing that.
There's an issue now as to whether or not the NFL should coerce their players to stand up for the National Anthem when they may not want to. And just the, just the possibility of coercion may, may make the rebel in, in many folks say, "What are you forcing me to, to stand up? I mean, you're making this a bigger deal. I mean, what's so, what's so important?" Well, the issue is money, really.
Right.
You know, they're afraid of, the NFL owners and the league are afraid of boycotts and things like that. I'm just looking at the other side of the coin. What good comes out of coercion? Because the players are going to find a way of protesting and speaking out anyway. I think the better, the better way is to find some sort of a middle ground, like Jim Calhoun was trying to do, that high school athletic director was trying to do.
I agree.
Find an effective way to allow many of your players to speak out on the big social issues of the day. Allow them to, to do that. And frankly, if some of the viewers get mad and close their bars, let them close, as far as I, it's my view. So I'm against the coercion aspect of suppressing the protests, even though, you know, the viewers may get angry, and there may be some money at stake. And I'm also against the idea of white guys dictating to black guys how, when, and where they should speak out on real issues. You know, regardless of, if the protesters, the black NFL players have the, the right perspective, the wrong perspective, that's not what I'm getting at right now. What, what I'm saying is, is it that important that you dictate how they, they protest? Your thoughts?
Well, I think you're on to something about the notion that rather than prohibit it, let's first try to talk about it. And the thing you might want to add to the conversation is, if you're going to have all these NFL, if you're going to have some NFL players in a room to talk about this, well, also bring in some of these fans who really love these players, love what they do, but don't necessarily like this form of protest. And let them speak, too. I'm not saying that, that anybody is right or wrong here, but it might be good for the players to hear from the fans legitimate feelings about why they're bothered by this.
And I, I, I agree with you. And I would just say, so the ground rules for that discussion would be check your guns at the door.
Absolutely.
Don't bring your anger.
Nothing's game.
Because it's not a platform to you to yell and scream.
No.
So check your temper at, at the door. If you want to have an honest discussion, put it on primetime TV or something like that.
Good, even better.
Fifteen minutes before a game or after a game, whatever we can work out.
Good.
We'll solve it, right?
That's right. Roger Goodell, call us up.
Thanks for watching the Citizen Mike Show. We do appreciate it. We produce on Wednesdays, but it's on WPAA TV on Thursdays at nine o'clock, Fridays at nine o'clock, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesdays at nine o'clock. In a few days after we produce, it's up on YouTube. Go to the YouTube Wallingford channel, and it becomes self-evident. Just had to click on the, the latest show. We want to thank Patty Purcell and Nick Daxtino for coming on. Being good sports, they did a terrific job.
Yes, they did.
And remember, hey, if it's nine at night, it's Citizen Mike. Good night, everybody.